Resolution nineteen R dash ninety-five.
Recognizing the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
May I have a second? Second. Motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Councilman Staglitt. May I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye. So I'm gonna read this into the record. Recognizing first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas the first Friday in June is known as National Gun Violence Awareness Day and whereas no Americans should fear for their lives or be victimized by gun violence, all Americans deserve a safe environment where they thrive without fear. Whereas public safety in the community is the Mount Laurel Township Council's highest responsibility. Whereas every life lost through the violence, whether a child or adult, whether law enforcement or citizen, is a tragedy. And whereas this resolution declares June seventh, two thousand nineteen, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Mount Laurel Township to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and... Do you wanna...
Yep.
Is that... Is that... Is somebody here?
I think so, yeah.
Hey, come on up, everybody. How do you wanna do it? All right.
Okay. Second. I'll do that.
Okay.
We really appreciate you going this year, second year doing this. And, you know, it's a national movement, but, um...
Thanks for the work you do to make it happen.
Thank you.
Resolution nineteen R dash ninety-six.
Proclamation and combination to Shannon Mulroy for outstanding performance.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Councilman Pritchett. I'm gonna read this into the record. Proclamation and combination to Shannon Mulroy for outstanding performance. Whereas Shannon Mulroy has been named Girls Basketball Player of the Year. Whereas when January tenth, two thousand nineteen, Lenape High School Girls Basketball was looking for a big play in the final seconds against rival Cherokee High School. The game was tied at thirty-three, thirty-three with about five seconds remaining. Rather than call a timeout, Lenape quickly inbounded the ball to senior Shannon Mulroy. Mulroy sprinted down the court and threw the stun Cherokee defense as she headed toward the hoop for a layup. The shot went in, Mulroy's teammates piled on to celebrate Lenape's thirty-five, thirty-three victory. Whereas that moment was one of several where Shannon showed her true greatness this season. Four-year varsity player with the Olympic Conference Navy scored in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and guided her team to a South Jersey Group Four championship. In her four years at Lenape, the team won a hundred games, two South Jersey Group Four championships, and a two thousand sixteen Group Four state championship, the only state title the Indians have ever won. Shannon finished her career with eleven-hundred-and-forty-two points. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, township council, and township manager, and township of Mount Laurel, county of Arlington, state of New Jersey, who hereby recognize and congratulate Shannon Mulroy for being named Girl Basketball Player of the Year, and wish her luck at Cornell University next year.
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Wait, wait.
Yep. Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. One more. That's what we get in here too. I know there's a lot of Saturday mornings, there's a lot of driving in there, so you guys gotta go in too.
Enter, Coach.
Coach.
Oh, Coach.
You wanna say it?
Oh, thank you.
What's that?
Shannon, you're not on the list yet.
Shannon, yeah. No problem. Uh, resolution nineteen R dash ninety-seven.
Resolution authorizing Mount Laurel Township to self-charge on top deals. Move the resolutions?
May I have a second? I'll second. Uh, motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Councilman Edelson. May I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Resolution nineteen R dash ninety-eight.
Resolution authorizing the township of Mount Laurel to enter to cooperative pricing agreement. Move the resolution?
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Councilman Staglitt. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Resolution nineteen R dash ninety-nine.
An anticipation of special item of revenue in the two thousand nineteen municipal budget pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, four dash eight seven, chapter one fifty-nine. Move the resolution?
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Councilman Staglitt. This one, uh, provides the twenty-six-hundred, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars from the state for repairs to Union Mill, which I'm sure we can all agree needs a little help.
And it's also the, um, uh, police grant.
Yes.
You text, you drive, you pay.
May I have a roll call, please?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Resolution nineteen R dash one hundred.
Resolution authorizing directing the Mount Laurel Township planning board to all the preliminary investigations we need pursuant to the New Jersey local redevelopment and housing law as to whether certain areas along Route seventy-three, Route thirty, and Route two ninety-five, or areas in the area development will be renovation within the meaning of intent of the statute.
Uh, may I have a motion?
Make a motion, vote approve?
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Councilman Pritchett. May I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Resolution nineteen R dash one oh-one.
Award third-party billing services for emergency medical services contracted.
May I have a, um, motion?
Make a motion, vote approve?
May I have a second?
Second.
So this, this one is, um, getting, um...
This is the percentage of our, um, of the billing that we pay to the third-party billing company. Uh, the bid came in actually lower than our parent rate. We're paying a little bit over four percent, and it came in at three-point-four-four-four percent, so, and we'll be locked in that for five years.
May I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Getting ahead of ourselves here, but, uh, may, uh, resolution nineteen R dash one oh-two.
The House was gonna purvey for mischief late hours for trick-or-treating colonies.
Are you anticipating?
I wanted to have it done in time for the next newsletter.
Sounds wonderful.
May I have a motion, please? I'll move to approve nineteen R one oh-two. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman Edelson, second by Deputy Mayor Bobo. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Resolution nineteen R dash one oh-three.
Resolution authorizing Mount Laurel Township to execute an agreement with Robinson County to cooperative participation in the Community Development Act nineteen seventy-four.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion, vote approve?
May I have a second?
This is to participate in the CDCG grant process. Um, we can participate every other year. We were awarded grant money last year to repay the street. Um, we won't be eligible until next year, but, um, the county is changing the stakeholders, how they do this. They normally have to apply in the year. This year, they want us to apply, we're gonna apply anytime within the next four years.
So we're gonna grant, and ask for... May I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Council, Councilman Staglitt. May I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Resolution nineteen R dash one oh-four.
Resolution accepting the planning board recommendation from Rand Coop to let be designated in the area development.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Councilman Pritchett, second by Deputy Mayor Bobo. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Capital presentation by department heads, uh, murder, please.
Sure. Our first, our first two ordinances that we had, um, our first reading this evening, one is a funded capital ordinance. The funded capital ordinance is, um, the money that we have from our premium when we refinance. And the other one is an unfunded when we go out, when we borrow a note, um, and that would be for roads to be paved. So I have various, um, department heads here tonight to go over their capital requests that will save these ordinances, so we'll start with EMS.
Good evening, mayors and councilors. Our capital requests this year are fairly simple and straightforward. We're asking for two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to remount two ambulances. Unfortunately, thirty-six eighty-two has a hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand miles on it, and thirty-six seventy-two has a hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand miles on it. With our call volume, we put just over a hundred-thousand miles on our vehicles combined every year. A remount runs roughly a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars as opposed to, with a remount, what we're doing is we're taking the box of the ambulance, they're taking that off, putting it onto a new chassis. A new ambulance will cost roughly two-hundred-and-forty to two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, so we generally save by doing the remounts. This is probably gonna be our last set of remounts that we're gonna be able to do because each ambulance will now be remounted twice. We're looking to do that as we, uh, do the remounts, we build new safety features into the vehicles to make it safer for our patients, uh, for residents, and for our staff. So that's the first part of our capital request. The second part of our capital request is for forty-thousand dollars for two new stretchers. We're looking to switch, right now, we have a Furno-based system. We're looking to move to a different manufacturer, to the Stryker system. Uh, we're doing this because standards in the industry require, uh, ambulances to be safer. So the Stryker system allows us to put a load system into the truck, which would take all the weight off the ambulance, there's no lifting. The, the, and the stretcher goes on and remotely goes into the vehicle. So what this does, it makes it safer for the patient in the event there's an accident or rollover, the stretcher stays, uh, intact to the truck, it doesn't separate from that. And it also, again, will reduce injuries to employees. If we look at our history of working with comp injuries, a lot of our injuries are lift-related injuries, so this will be one of those things that we can reduce that. The new stretchers are also equipped, uh, to handle bariat for patient a lot easier. So we do do a lot of calls where we have to go out and handle patients that are in excess of five-hundred or six-hundred pounds. As I indicated previously, at discussions, uh, we, last year, we had just over ninety of those bariat calls throughout Burlington and Camden County. Uh, Mount Laurel, we're the only, uh, emergency medical service that all our ambulances are equipped right now to handle bariat patients. We're the only ones in Burlington and Camden County that are able to do it. But it makes it safer with the new stretchers to be able to accommodate that patient comfortably and safely in the ambulance. We're also hoping that with the switch to the Stryker, even though we're only looking for two stretchers this time, the Stryker system, if something happened with that stretcher, the Furno stretcher will still work in that system as well. If we flipped it around the opposite way, Furno only works in Furno, but Stryker will accommodate the other stretchers as well, so it'll benefit us as we work to try to transition over to the new safer systems. So those are the two things that we're looking for in that.
So the N S G, um, strength levels were passed to our quarter of the month. That's quarter, we're in number twenty-one. So this is, we have the two-point-five-million dollars, it's just authorization from council to use that funding that we already have on.
I can see. Thank you.
So do you want us to propose nineteen twenty-one now? Is it all, I'm gonna go through all of them, because there are a few more things with the funded.
So, that'll bother us, um, here's our court administrators here, we're gonna line up for, um, our stuff together. So one of the, um, we're asking for money for buildings and ground improvements. One of the things would be for an expansion of the boarding, um, the port office. So, now can, um, go over a little bit of, you know, record retention, how many tickets they have. We're basically running out of space, um, so we would extend the building, um, to give them more room, so that...
Well, I can tell you, I started here in nineteen ninety. And, so twenty-nine years ago, we were in a separate building where the senior center is now. Unfortunately, that building burned through ground on September twenty-second, October twenty-two. All the records we had were lost. All the paper, everything we had was gone. They put us in this office where we are currently, preferably. Twenty-six years later, we are, you know, we're still there. Uh, and twenty-six years later, as you can imagine, our paper volume has, you know, doubled, if not tripled. Uh, the size of the town is growing from nineteen ninety till now, and with all of the, you know, income from, or all the residents moving in and the businesses, our numbers are starting off, and this, this is more, we attest. Last year alone, we had thirteen-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-four people attending court here. There were thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six tests on the issue. Our phone, our volume, our, we're just running, we have to keep our records for, you know, some years. DWI's we're keeping permanently, clearly. Uh, they used to be fifteen years, but we have to keep them permanently now. Criminal charges, same thing, we have to keep them, and we're running out of time.
One of the things too, is, um, I actually have spent a day in each department, my deputy manager, one of the things I noticed when I was down in court, is, you know, with thirteen-thousand people from the year coming through to pay tickets, we only have one very small window, and it only gives us the capability to wait on one person at a time. The expansion would allow for two windows, um, technology improvements, there would be two credit card machines, so that we could get the most revenue as possible, um, at that time.
Well, it's also for safety reasons, too, as you, the lobby that hacked, you don't, it's, it's a fire hazard, it's, you know, something could happen, and have all these people in the lobby, and all these people in the building, so we do try to set it, court sessions, so that we keep the flow moving, but, uh, backups in everywhere, something else.
The other, um, uh, portion of the buildings and ground renovations would be, um, the carpet has started to come off at Senior Center. We've had a few, um, bad stripping hazards over there, so we would be looking to replace the, um, carpet where the carpet tiles just that are in here, we have one section of being removed. Um, it would also be to do filing and cubicles over the, over here at the police department. Um, they're also running out of space, um, so we would be able to need the record retention set by state law in order for us to comply with that. We have also on here, uh, info, on the funded one, information, technology, um, obviously computers, technology, servers, things of that nature, that we need to comply with, we need, um, another server due to the retention, this guy's well with, um, the backup camera videos. So that would be for the funded ordinance. Um, the ordinance, the only other portion of this funded ordinance is part of Jerry Masha from Public Works, so I'll have him come up and talk out just his funded portion.
Good evening, mayors and councilors. First, the capital improvements is the local road program?
No.
Oh.
All the equipment, sorry.
Uh, first request then for the funded is the generator for Public Works. Currently, when we lose power, the generator that powers the Public Works building only supports emergency lighting and two standard power outlets. Maintenance garage has no power at all to run equipment like air compressors, welding machines, or, or any power handle in the event of lost power. This puts the township Public Works department at a disadvantage when we were trying to deal with a storm coming up, whether it be snow, down trees, flooding, or other storm-related issues. Having the ability to operate at full capacity helps us serve the residents at a hundred percent during bad storms and state of emergencies to give the necessary repairs needed, so the equipment can get tagged out on the road and taken out of service and, uh, hours restored. The second request is a brush wall truck. Currently have a two-thousand-eight brake liner brush loader and a two-thousand-six international brush loader. Two-thousand-six is at the end of its useful life. Requesting funds for a new brush truck to continue to pick up range of brush loader in Mount Laurel. Third request is a five-yard dump truck with plow and sander. That is gonna replace a nineteen ninety-seven Ford five-yard dump truck that has reached the end of its useful life. Fifth, our fourth and final request for the funded is garage bay doors for the maintenance shop. Twelve bay doors in maintenance garage are over forty years old and have been patched and repaired countless times, and still has numerous amounts of holes and deterioration. I'd like to replace them with new doors that have better insulating ability, uh, heat and heat during the winter months, and keep out the cold, break through saving on the amount of heat we have to use to keep the area warm, and also properly securing the location and equipment stored within it.
So now, that, that takes everything for ordinance twenty-one, which is the funded. This leads up to the, um, ordinance number twenty, which is the unfunded. The only request that, um, we have for this is the, um, road program, which would be the two thousand and nineteen road program.
So the road program, which is, uh, five-million-four-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, we have twenty-seven roads on the list for payment. Union Hill Road from Laurel Lakers Park to Academy Drive, which receives many complaints about the condition of the road is on that list. The cost for that project alone is one million, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. The grant we will receive for that project is five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. However, if we do not pay that this year, we will lose that grant money marked for that project. Chicory Drive in Holiday Village had received a community block development grant, and we will have to pay that road this year in order to not lose that grant money as well. There's also a hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars marked for replacement of concrete curbing and modeled with the curbing embedded within the road program. And we have set aside two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for the inside road program, which will cover the cost of underground crane repair and asphalt for Public Works.
So there's twenty-seven roads that are on the, this road program. Council provided the list of rooms, um, but if you have any questions for myself or any department members at this time, we can move that to the press right now.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. I have the motion for first reading, twenty nineteen dash twenty.
Nordest in the township of Mount Laurel and county of Arlington, New Jersey, providing various capital improvements and related expenses in and toward the township, appropriating five-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-five-thirty-six, therefore, authorizing the issue of five-million-one-seventy-two-three-oh-nine, the general improvement needs of the senior township to come with the funds.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for twenty nineteen dash twenty, publication date of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, and cover three days, and six-thousand-one.
And second.
I'll second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Councilman Pritchett. May I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Ordnance for first reading, twenty nineteen dash twenty.
Nordest in the township of Mount Laurel and county of Arlington, New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and related expenses in and toward the township, appropriating two-million-five-eighty-six-nine-sixty-eight upon the scene. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty nineteen dash twenty, publication date of April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. I'm sorry. And the public hearing date of May sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
And second.
I'll second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Bobo, second by Councilman Staglitt. May I have a roll call, please?
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Ordnance for first reading, twenty nineteen dash twenty-two.
Needing a new tag for one-twenty-six from the township's authority for smoking and public behaviors.
So, this is, it'll be the...
Is there any smoking or smoking on any township that is not working?
There's, and, we're following suit with Disney and Temple University, and then from there, it's, it's, so, just one through Laurel Lakers Park, you don't have to, you have your kids there, you don't have to worry about, potentially one day, if it passes, one day, you know, a small man or one of the grandkids, your kids out in the park. I had a motion for twenty nineteen dash twenty-two first reading. Mr. Mayor, I'll approve two nine, two thousand nineteen dash twenty-two with the publication date of April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, and a public hearing date of May sixth, two thousand and nineteen. And second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Edelson, second by Councilman Staglitt. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move. Ordnance for first reading, twenty nineteen dash twenty-three.
Nordest permitting check for one-one-three is the township authority title, head on and soliciting to establish a do-not-solicit list.
May I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve two thousand nineteen dash twenty-three, with a publication date of April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, and a public hearing date of May sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
And second?
I'll second.
So, need new roof for siding or solar panels, you're gonna have to vote it on the internet, with the big passes. Forward by, uh, uh, forward by Councilman Edelson, second by Deputy Mayor Bobo, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Edelson?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Bobo?
Aye.
Councilman Pritchett?
Aye.
Councilman Staglitt?
Aye.
Mayor Coulter?
Aye, so move.
I just wanna add that the existing ordinance, this just being something existing ordinance, um, the existing ordinance, um, does require, if someone is soliciting, to come to the township to get a permit to do stuff. So if someone knocks on your door, you are well within your rights to ask to see the township, their township issue of permits.
And whoever is issued a permit, their picture will be on our, our website as well.
And whoever is issued a permit, their picture will be on our website as well. Ordinance for first reading, twenty nineteen dash twenty-four.
Amendment to chapter one hundred and seven of the township code entitled parks and recreation to allow special events at all spots.
May I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for twenty nineteen dash twenty-three, excuse me, dash twenty-four, for a publication date of April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, and a public hearing date of May sixth. And second.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Steiglitz, second by Councilman Pritchett. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Councilman Ellison, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. So these are, these are going to be ordinances now coming up for second reading. They will be open for comments, but the comments will only be for the ordinance and only this ordinance. So the first one's twenty nineteen dash eleven.
Ordinance commending the code of the township of Mount Laurel, chapter one four eight, May April seventeenth.
Does anybody want, care to come up and comment about this ordinance and this ordinance eleven? Seeing no one from the public, may I have a motion for twenty nineteen dash eleven? I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Steiglitz, second by Councilman Pritchett. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Councilman Ellison, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. Ordinance twenty nineteen dash twelve.
Ordinance commending chapter one five four of the township code entitled zoning to amend regulations pertaining to accessory uses. This had a change, one change from the planning board in section C for accessory uses. Instead of can be reduced, if the can is crossed out and it shall read shall.
Does anybody care to come to the podium and comment about this ordinance and this ordinance eleven? Seeing no comments, I will ask for a motion for twenty nineteen dash twelve. I'll make a motion. And with planning board recommendations, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Steiglitz with planning board recommendations, second by Councilman Pritchett. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Councilman Ellison, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. Ordinance for second reading, twenty nineteen dash thirteen.
Ordinance commending chapter one five four of the township code entitled zoning to amend common definitions.
Does anybody from the public care to come to the podium and speak about this ordinance and this ordinance eleven? Seeing nobody, may I have a motion to move twenty nineteen dash thirteen? Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve two thousand nineteen dash thirteen. And second. Motion by Councilman Ellison, second by Councilman Steiglitz. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Ellison, aye. Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. May I have a ordinance, second reading, twenty nineteen dash fourteen.
Ordinance commending chapter one five four of the township code entitled zoning to moderate sign standards. This also had a change in section S where it says seven consecutive days per year, per year is to be struck, is to be struck out.
Section, section S.
Such important ordinance. If anybody from the public would care to come to the podium and talk about this ordinance with its changes and this ordinance eleven, please do. Seeing nobody from the public, may I have a motion for ordinance twenty nineteen dash fourteen? Mr. Mayor, I'll approve the motion to approve two thousand nineteen dash fourteen with planning board recommendations. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Ellison, second by Councilman Steiglitz. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Ellison, aye. Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Just Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. Ordinance, second reading, twenty nineteen dash fifteen.
Ordinance commending chapter one five four of the township code entitled zoning to permit food trucks under limited conditions.
Does anybody from the public care to come up and speak about ordinance twenty nineteen dash fifteen and only twenty nineteen dash fifteen? Seeing nobody from the public, may I have a, oh, I'm sorry, may I have a motion? May I have a second? Motion by Councilman Steiglitz, second by Councilman Pritchett. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Councilman Ellison, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. Ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen.
Ordinance commending chapter one five four dash fifty-six for limiting on-site consumption of marijuana, marijuana-related products.
Does anybody care to come up to the podium and speak about this ordinance and this ordinance eleven? Seeing nobody, may I have a motion for ordinance twenty nineteen dash sixteen? Mr. Mayor, I'll approve two thousand nineteen dash sixteen. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Ellison, second by Deputy Mayor Bobo. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Ellison, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. Resolution twenty nineteen dash seventeen.
Commending chapter one five four of the township code entitled zoning to include a feeding schedule for off-site mobile housing accommodations.
Does anybody care, podium, to speak about ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventeen and only twenty nineteen dash seventeen? Seeing nobody on the podium, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I made more than two of them out. Ordinance twenty nineteen dash seventeen, a publication...
May I have a second? Motion by Councilman Pritchett, second by Deputy Mayor Bobo. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Pritchett, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Councilman Ellison, aye. Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. Ordinance twenty nineteen dash eighteen.
Commending chapter one five four of the township code entitled zoning and one five four dash one three one point one two entitled administrative procedures for sale and rentals to add one five four dash one three one point twelve K administrative fees.
Does anybody care to come to the podium and speak about this ordinance and this ordinance eleven? Seeing nobody, may I have a motion for twenty nineteen dash eighteen?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Steiglitz, second by Councilman Ellison. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Councilman Ellison, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. Ordinance twenty nineteen dash nineteen.
Ordinance commending chapter one five four of the township code entitled zoning to establish standards for wireless communication towers and facilities.
May I have a, I'm sorry, if anybody care to come to the podium and speak about this ordinance, twenty nineteen dash nineteen and only twenty nineteen dash eleven? Seeing nobody, I will ask for a motion. Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve two thousand nineteen dash thirteen. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Ellison, second by Councilman Steiglitz. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Ellison, aye. Councilman Steiglitz, aye. Councilman Pritchett, aye. Deputy Mayor Bobo, aye. Mayor Volker, aye.
Aye, so moved. Just did a lot of work there, folks. Couple of things, no smoking, I think that's going to be something people are going to really be happy about. And then I run through Royal Lakers Park almost every day and no smoking, no vaping, I think that's something that is really going to resonate throughout the community. So there...
I was just saying, glad we were able to pass all of our capital expenditures. This goes to much-needed road work and our EMS, ambulance for emergencies.
So we're going to open up to the public right now. There is going to be a proper process and procedures. If somebody has addressed a concern that you have, we've got a lot of people here, so at the end of the day, what we want to do, if what is concerning has already been addressed, we're going to ask you to come up with something else you'd like to chat about other than what's already been addressed. If something's already been addressed, we're going to ask you to move on. A lot of people here, a lot of people have different things that they want to talk to the council about. So, you know, we want to accommodate everybody and we will, but at the same time, you know, something or even what we're bringing to our attention has already been addressed. We're going to ask you to find another subject, choose something else, and we'll move on. So with that in mind, we're now open to public participation. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, sign in, say your name and address.
I will, I just...
Is it working?
Yes, yes.
Okay. My name is Harry Cohen. I live at Town Alderton Lane. I have stood here for the PS5 council meetings and that is how I have identified myself. Tonight I am going to add something else that I never thought I would have to do on the township of Mount Laurel. But because I saw a quote from the mayor in a local paper, speaking of angry partisan electors, I would like to identify myself as an angry partisan elector. I am a member of the Democratic Party and I am proud to be standing here as an angry elector. I am part of a party with integrity, equality, we stand for fairness, and we stand for transparency. And the fact that this council says they want to go to nonpartisan elections when we have been identified in the paper as Democrats, I haven't seen a partisan move like this and I am offended and I am really disturbed that this would happen in my town. I want to just historically quickly say that I was at the council meeting when the gentleman whom you referred to mayor as speaking very eloquently raised the issue of changing the date of the elections because the issues of our town should be overwhelmed in larger elections. I immediately raised concern about cost and turnout, and I thought I spoke eloquently too, but that wasn't noted in the paper. Honestly, never thinking that there was a hidden agenda. Had I not seen the reaction of several council members despite my age and I am not very cynical, I was shocked when I saw that maybe there was a hidden agenda to this. The man was very credible and if he's here tonight, I apologize. But it is interesting to me that I have not seen the man that brought that up at a meeting since that time, and I have been at every one of them. I would like to address his original concern. His original concern was, let's move the meeting, let's move the date of the election so we are not overshadowed. And the thought was, maybe we should move to May. There has been some talk about the cost of that and the low voter turning. So what I now read in the paper is, well, if we pass the referendum, it will allow us to vote in May, but then it can quickly be changed to November as nonpartisan. I would like to know how that addresses this gentleman. We are back to where we started. We are running with national elections and his whole concern was that they shouldn't be overshadowed. So I feel like we went in a big circle and we've gotten nowhere. By the way, independents can run on a ballot. I have read, Councilman Edison, that you were saying independents have to have an opportunity. It is my understanding and I am...
Is there a petition to get on the...
They have to petition, absolutely, so we do not need nonpartisan. There is a line for independents. Our mayor says, and again, this is in a newspaper article, he has been thinking about nonpartisan elections for some time, and I do believe that. But before two Democrats were elected to this council, no mention of this has ever been made in this town. Even though we have not had a seat at this table for years, not one of us has ever thought about changing the date of an election. And so I'd like to be clear, without mentioning names, I think there's an elephant in this room. To be very, very honest, I would not want to run in 2020 on a line. And my, 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 my wish is that the Republicans who are not happy with the way the ticket's going to look, instead of running from it, would work, every one of them, the United States of America, along with Democrats, to change the top of that ticket. We would be delighted to do that. I have already made a contribution to the past governor of Massachusetts who is going to be running. And I encourage everybody to do that if you believe, as I do, that there is an elephant in this man, in this room. I have watched the past few years as Republicans throughout America have tried to repress votes so the voter turnout would be to their advantage. I am a lot older than you might think and I was very involved in the civil rights movement. I have lived in this town for 21 years and I have not been unhappy with this government. If I had, you would have heard from me before now. I have to tell you that I am shocked by and disappointed in the actions of my neighbors, the Republicans in Mount Laurel. I have never in my life had a Republican friend or neighbor with whom I couldn't find common ground. I am so saddened that the last few years have brought changes in those relationships, even in my town. My last comment, last time when I spoke and I asked why this was coming up, the mayor said, when something is brought to the attention of the council, they must act on it. And he compared it to trash, collecting trash. He said, look at we've acted on that. Collecting trash is an issue that affects every one of us every day of our lives. Changing elections to suppress votes, to have people win by their names that people will recognize because the encolments are all up and the Democrats running against them, no one will know who we are. So if you believe that everything that we bring to you has to be addressed, I have a hypothetical. And I want everyone to hear me because it is a hypothetical, nobody get upset. I would like to know, if I came to you and said, I would like to look to you to look into making Mount Laurel a sanctuary township, what would the reception be from this council? You don't have to answer it, I just want to make a point and I thank you for your time.
I know you don't want to be too late, but... Sorry, Don Edelman, two eighty below way. And while it's repetitive, but I do have to piggyback on what Harry just said, that it's very curious as to why we're trying to do this. And I'd just like to hear a couple of good reasons, other than getting lost in the election, why we should change that, so I have to say.
Good evening. My name is Cyrus Ballard. I'm the political action chair of the Southern Burlington County chapter of the NAACP. And I stand before you to read a letter from our president in regards to this ordinance. It reads, "To whom it may concern, the Constitution of the United States of America promises the right to vote shall not be denied or abridged. When we hear voter suppression, many think back to Jim Crow era America and ta... and tactics such as officials finding excuses to disenfranchise blacks with poll taxes and literacy tests. However, while they may be different, voter suppression tactics are ever present in today's era. Ridespread voter suppression, particularly against historically marginalized groups, is a reoccurring problem here in the land of the free. In today's America, we see voter suppression tactics such as requiring voter IDs, voter purges, poll closures, intentional long lines, voter confusion, poll watchers, physically blocking voters without cause, voter intimidation and harassment, malfunctioning voter equipment, and blatantly disqualifying voter registrations. Each election cycle, an untold number of eligible voters are prevented from voting because the voter registration process restricts, restrictions on casting ballots and discriminatory and partisan rig district maps. We have seen these practices occurring across our nation and making national headlines. Now it is happening in our own backyard. These deceptive practices are solely to improve, solely to improve the electoral chances of certain party members. And to do so without the full disclosure of their party affiliation. And in alignment, voters have the right to know who they are voting for. Voters have the right to decide if the person or persons they are voting for align with their morals, principles, and beliefs. It should not be a surprise after the closing of polls that the true representation of the person on the ballot is then revealed. Every voter has the right to be an informed voter and informed prior to the casting of their ballot. To move to the election and present nonpartisan ballot is intentional overt deception. To add insult to injury, it is also being done at the cost of taxpayers. This is voter suppression." Please, the expectations of your legislators, I'm speaking to the people. As a taxpayer and voter, you are in fact the employer and must hold them accountable. If you are opposed to voter suppression in your town, now is the time to speak out and against this unethical and dishonorable attempt to sway our election, your election. You must repeal, you must repeal any and all voter suppression measures. As Reverend Doctor Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Every man must decide whether he will walk in the light of creative altruism or in the darkness of destructive selfishness." You have a decision to make. I'm going to add that I appreciate Councilman St. Luke's, the Gleeks, and Councilman Pritchett's stance on this matter thus far. The Gleek summarized it perfectly when he said that this is a sleazy attempt to hide your party affiliation. Now, I know that recently your Republican hasn't had the best look, but you do not improve your image or change the impression people have of you by using sneaky tactics. That just makes everything worse. What you're supposed to do is do things to build your community and do things to prevent the negativity that's going on in this nation. The irony of this ordinance, it's an attempt to hide who you are, but you actually show exactly who you are. Because instead of doing the work that you're supposed to do to prevent what's going on in this nation from coming to this community, what you have done is try to change the rules to maintain, try to maintain your position of power without doing the proper work to earn that position. This means one of two things. Either you agree with the prejudice and bigotry going on in this nation and do not have the tenacity to own up to it, or you disagree and want to disassociate with it, but do not have the tenacity to upset, tenacity to upset certain people. People you shouldn't be aligned with in the first place. Either way, this is lousy leadership. Councilman Pritchett made some excellent points at the last meeting about how so many people have fought for the right to vote in this country. But as many people, as some people have pointed out already, it's being undermined. You know, we saw in Georgia and Florida, they were on the verge of having their first African-American governors, but at the same time, there was much voter suppression happening mainly in African-American communities. In fact, the Republican candidate in Georgia was the Secretary of State at the time and he is accused of over 30,000 purged votes. Very suspicious behavior. But if you don't think these are serious acts of voter suppression, let's look to North Dakota, where there was a rule made...
Sir, sir, I think you should focus your comments. We don't want to hear about your thoughts on the national political scene.
It has a relationship...
It applies, so let me try to talk out.
One person speaks at the time. We do have policies and procedures at the podium. Please follow the route. One person talks.
Okay, I'm making a point, thanks. Okay, as I was saying, the, in North Dakota, there is an ordinance where you have to have a home address in order to be a registered voter. This discriminates against the homeless and also discriminates against Native American, Native American voters where Native American reservations do not have typical home addresses. They're just set up differently. And ironically, when, ironically, the Congresswoman who's got a lot of Native American support, she lost her seat. Now, it applies to this area because I feel that it is an injustice that is starting to come to Burlington County. It is a cycle that is starting. And it's not just a matter of political power, it's also a matter of diversity. I've been, I mentioned very specific groups that are mentioned. So I don't find it a coincidence that this ordinance not only takes, takes, takes place during the, takes place during the verge of a political shift, but takes early within the era of this board's first African-American member and...
There's no ordinance, sir. There's no ordinance. There's no ordinance.
It's up for discussion while we...
Yes, there's no ordinance. I haven't even received a memo from the solicitor yet, so...
We don't have an ordinance, this sort of discussion...
We don't have an ordinance. Someone came to the podium, made us a judgment. And by the way, Matt Cohen, I don't believe that he said move the election to May. He just said, what about a nonpartisan election?
That is not what I remember.
One person at the podium...
That's not what I remember, but I'm not going to debate that.
Okay, so, so we're not talking about winning elections to May here. I, you know, we could all go on the record...
At the last meeting, at the last meeting, the mayor asked the solicitor to draw up an ordinance. That's why people are here, because the wheels are moving at this point.
This is why they create...
I have been waiting for this.
I think there's a trend of gaslighting going on, making people seem like they're not seeing what's exactly going on, okay?
I haven't even received them that much.
Okay, well, I'll finish with saying that whether it's ordinance or suggestion, many people are watching and you need to do the right thing. Because it is dishonest, prejudiced, unfair, and frankly, just cowardly. Thank you for your time.
I thought that something, believing you get up to the voters of Mount Laurel is suppression. Anytime you put something to the voters and let them vote on it, that's not suppression.
And a low voter turnout.
Correct. If everybody, everybody in this town gets to... Okay, I'm sorry.
It's a November election. If you, in my opinion, if you're giving voters, you're giving the residents of Mount Laurel a choice. And I, it could be this issue, it could be any issue. I don't care what it is. If you're giving voters a choice, whether or not they want something, that's not voter suppression.
Does anybody have a choice? One person at the podium at the time. If anybody, if anybody wants to come to the podium and talk about a subject that hasn't been addressed or it hasn't been addressed or there's pieces to that that you want to add on, feel free. But let's not trot over the same ground. There are a lot of people here, quite a few people here with different issues.
Well, excuse me, I want to say something. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, this is a public area and I think the public have the right to speak their monologue and you call it.
Now, if anybody can be silent. And I do not disagree, but there are procedures that we have to follow to maintain order in this court. I have certainty that if, if something they have said has already been addressed, I'm asking the Gleeks to come up with some new angle or what have you. Let's not trot over ground. There are the people, believe it or not, that might have other issues that they want to discuss. So there are procedures, there are policies, there is a decorum, so let's follow that, please. Thank you.
I think there's a power in numbers, though. And if you have a concern about an ordinance or this proposal, or this conversation ordinance, I think you have every right to be heard, which is what Councilman Pritchett is saying. So to say, no, I'm sorry, you can't, can't speak about something...
It's not what I said at all. It's not what I said at all.
Continue, continue to speak. Don't let yourself be...
You know, I think, I think, I think we can help. How many people here, by show of hands, is, let me rephrase this correctly, is...
Against voter suppression.
How many people here are not in favor, is that where, uh, it's the, not in favor of a nonpartisan election in November? You're not in favor of, so you're, you're opposed to a nonpartisan election in November. Not in November. I raise my hand, it's not... No, no, in November. So you're opposed to a nonpartisan election.
If you're running beat party, you should be willing to wear it.
Raise your hand, Tom. You have a good idea of the field of residence. So we want us to all...
I want to know who...
Or anytime.
That's right, anytime.
So you're in favor of partisan elections.
We are in favor of not hiding from partisan affiliation.
Why don't you sign with the podium? One, please state your name. If you don't have anything to say, move on. Please state your name and your issue.
Sorry.
I'll be back, actually.
Take your time.
My name is Karen Tillman. I live at 100 Holly Lane. I've been a resident in Mount Laurel for six years. I was actually raised here. I was here since I was two and I left after college and I came back. My ask is not about this. Well, I do appreciate everyone's passion. That's amazing, seeing it in action. My request is related to the resolution. It's, I think, a complement to the resolution that you passed early this evening regarding the national, in support of the gun violence day in early June. So I want to personally thank you for doing that. What I ask for our mayor is to also join the Mayors Against Illegal Guns. It is a coalition of over 1,500 mayors. We actually have sister townships to us that are, those mayors have signed that. That's Berlins Township, Del Ram, Cherry Hill, Voorhees. Those are ones that are just close to us, but there are others like such as Wildwood, Aberdeen, in our state. There's a series of principles that the, by signing this agreement, you would commit to for Mount Laurel Township. And so I ask that this be added as a resolution at the next meeting. I'm happy to go through what those principles are, but there is a website that you're free to review as well.
Yes, that information went to the...
I would like, I actually have reached out to the township manager on several occasions. Obviously, there's a lot of the budget I have not heard back yet from that request, which is why I'm coming here to make that request personally.
Our solicitor is actually reviewing your request.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Howard. I live in 97 Kellabur Tribe in Mount Laurel. So I have not been here these last few meetings, so I'm trying to get a clearer idea. I'm reading one thing in the paper and hearing another thing when I get here. Is there a discussion about having a special election in April? No? May? No? So what's the reporter reporting on some of these?
Well, it has...
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
The question was raised, the question was raised in the meeting room apparently five minutes ago as to whether or not the election could be changed to another date. I was asking researchers that, I researched it and responded in the last meeting. But there was difference in opinion as to the members of the government body that were here. So I wasn't authorized. I didn't have the authorization to do anything. At this point, I'm going to hold it back.
Okay, does anybody know if we were to hold a special election, how much would it cost?
So I'm here to tell you that I can speak for myself and we could, you know, everybody can chime in here, that I'm not in favor of holding election any other time than the normal November election. Sir Pritchett, how about you?
I have left, keep it the same.
As a nonpartisan election?
Nonpartisan.
I am on, I am committed to a November election.
Okay, so...
I am committed to a November election, yeah.
And to answer your question of the reason why people started talking about May elections, because technically the ordinance, the referendum would be passed, would say it would be a special May election, nonpartisan. And then we would have to approve of a November, non, nonpartisan or partisan election. It's pretty clear that Councilman Pritchett and I want to keep things the way they are.
Right, so the question I got, the, you know, the question. So if someone doesn't want to run with their party, so I know in the past there were people that, you know, haven't been endorsed by the Democrats or Republicans, they can run in a different line, correct? So I just think if that's a concern, that someone doesn't want to be associated with their vote, ticket, is there a way for them just to run in a different...
Yes.
Huh? Yeah, okay. So the other questions I have, I want to say that I'm glad that you guys are splitting somebody towards Union Road, but I didn't have a list of roads. I mean, I didn't have a list, so is it...
Once it's approved at the next meeting or the public hearing, the council passes it, then we'll advertise the 27 roads that have been approved.
Okay, so hopefully there's a portion of that road between Briggs and Hartford.
Built.
No, that's...
Developed.
The developer is set to do that.
Yeah, they said that a couple years, I know you only...
Yeah, once the, once the building part of Signature Place is completed, they'll start to work on the road. The delay with the road is besides, it's not like they come to us and ask us to fix the road. It needs state approval. So they have a design mechanism right now. Our engineer and their engineer are due to go to the state in the next couple of months. So it's kind of just waiting on state authorization for the developer to start doing it.
Okay, and then my last concern was infrastructure. I haven't been here in a while, but sure, some of you know of any advocates for rebuilding the Center and Bridge. I noticed a lot of congestion issues. So if you could take the time out to talk to the county engineer. This is just ridiculous, getting on and off 295, another county road that they need to hear. They need to hear from the towns that are impacted by this because it's just trying to get on 295 off there.
Are you talking about Mason, the Masonville, uh, Creek Road?
I'm talking about Creek. When you get off 295, you go on Creek Road down Masonville.
So that has been one going discussion.
Okay.
And we have been talking with Assemblywoman Kurt and Assemblywoman Murphy have been meeting...
We've been talking about, so, we're trying, so in order to alleviate that traffic and Mr. Holt's here, he's sitting right on that corner of Creek and Masonville Road. So what we have happening right now is an inordinate amount of traffic coming from, they're basically using the Creek Road exit instead of the 38 exit because the 38, 295 is so convoluted, the southbound and northbound entrance. It's, it's just not a good thing. Assemblywoman Murphy's been kind enough to try to move forward with the funding to basically change that entrance and egress of 295 and 38. We feel if we can get like a normal clover leaf at 38 and 295, you know, what will happen then is that'll help alleviate a lot of the traffic that Mr. Holt has to deal with over on Masonville Road and Creek. And to be quite candid, you know, we'll see how Assemblywoman Murphy does. You know, we're supporting her in this effort and, you know, she has nothing but her good praises for this to have.
Yeah, and I know everyone does agree, but really think about how you can support the Center and Bridge and the people that did use it or have impacted by it.
The township has asked me how many multiple times to reconsider opening that bridge. At this time, they're not going to, but I would urge you to go to a preholder screening.
Why, they know me.
But we need...
I think that's already been approved, please.
Demolished, yeah.
You know, just think about this group in Mount Laurel, where people impacted. You know, it's very easy when you ignore it, let's say you guys have ignored it, but just think that all your residents that are in the county, you know, we're in the county, but also in the town. And I know people sit back and say la, la, la. But this bridge has impacted, exposure has impacted people. And I think the last few preholder elections, I know that that had an impact and that voted in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Pritchett. I'm in the 1206 Warren Road. My husband is Corinne Pritchett on the council. He did that in 2016 and I think it's very important that, we moved here in 2009 and we found Mount Laurel to be a very diverse town. Our family is very blended, a mixed child. My stepson is here. In 2016, a smear campaign was run against my husband and he kept very humble and quiet and didn't use it in his past election. I have the picture of how the Republican Party endorsed and put out a banner, trying to make my husband look like a thug. This is outside Lifetime Gym where they cropped out Lifetime, made the picture darker, so he appeared blacker. And this is what they sent to scare people that you don't want somebody like this on your board. This was endorsed by Ms. Bobo, I believe Edelson, and I'm not sure about you. But that's the reason we need to have a partisan election. Mount Laurel has... I have a lot of copies of this. Mount Laurel has a very rich history. My daughters taught when she was younger in elementary school about the Indians. But it has a very rich black history. In nineteen seventy-two, the mayor stood up in front of the council, in front of Jacob Chapel, and told them that if they couldn't afford to live in Mount Laurel, they had to move out. Here we are, fast forward in two thousand nineteen, and another tactic is being used for voter suppression. The traffic, which I've heard in the past at meetings, is because of the traffic coming from affordable housing. That's not why we have traffic. Because I see those beautiful apartments being built on breaks, which I'm sure will bring a lot of traffic. But we raise our children to think for themselves. We don't raise them to be Democrats or Republicans. My family is a bunch of Republicans. My husband's a Democrat. We can all sit around and we can all converse and not fight, not argue. And it would be beautiful to see everybody in politics do the same thing. But unfortunately, that's not the political climate. But I'm completely against. My husband would never run on a smear campaign. He would never use anything against anybody as far as the way they look, their race, their religion. But I want you guys to keep this in mind. This is what the Republican Party for Mount Laurel endorsed.
Mrs. Pritchett.
Your name was on this, that it was the Republican Party.
I'm just, I'm just responding to your... So when talking, discussing traffic in Mount Laurel and you brought up the Briggs Road and Union Mill complex. So we, the township, litigated that case twice. And we were told by our court master who oversees our affordable housing, our judge, that we lose because that subdivision with other subdivisions too contain affordable housing, and that trumps everything. So what we're trying to do is keep traffic down. But we're faced with judges and our court master who manages our affordable housing saying, you have to build it in order to meet your affordable housing obligations. So we've tried to fight that with...
You're saying what's on Briggs Road is all affordable housing?
No, but as a part, a portion of it is.
I understand, I understand the whole of that.
We have enough all of it to satisfy the court to get the affordable housing. We don't, actually, we don't build it, these developers, but we have to agree to...
Out of everything I just said, that's all you heard?
No.
We're going to address the rest of what you said, Mrs. Pritchett.
So just like, so you've...
I don't think it's Pritchett answering to her husband. You want to talk to her, speak to her.
Good evening.
So we were also called racist up here in print in the newspaper by our... I have to say that too, because they do look racist.
Well, there you go. So that's why we want to take the political, that's politics. When we start labeling people that way, that's politics and that's why we want to take them.
And I'm saying that the...
You're with the party.
And I'm saying that...
I thought the person at the microphone...
I mean, Reverend Donald D. Dynas, one sixty-six, Rambo with Garris, Mount Laurel, Missouri. I have a, an article here. So I'll be referring exactly to the printed article as what was indicated as it refers to the May election. But I would like to say the fact that I have been here in Mount Laurel for forty-one years. So I have a history. I've seen the township stabilize. I've seen the council people work endlessly, time after time. And I appreciate Jerry and I appreciate Meredith for the work they do, and I appreciate each council member. However, I was at a session, and I believe it was not the last meeting, but the one before that, where there was discussion about the budget. And at that time, I believe there was a violation of political ethics. I believe that at that point, because there was some discussion about if the Democrats had supported the budget, they didn't support the budget because they said they were going to run on the fact they were not going to support the budget. However, the Arnold Mayor sailed and, in my case, badgered and bullied one of the Democrat council persons on if they didn't agree with the budget as such. How are they going to change it? Where were they going to change it? And that is a good point to discuss behind closed doors, but not in the public, not before the general public. It's okay, I'm speaking, thank you. It's okay if there's going to be a five percent reduction in the budget. But then it's a matter of where you're going to take it from. You're going to take it from Public Works, one percent from Public Works, three percent from the police department, another percent from the administration. And so it's a type of thing that you have to work on. Now, Mayor, I recognize the fact that you are an expert on budgeting and doing things of that nature. However, I'm just saying that on the spot, you should not ask a council person to give you a definitive answer to your question. Now, one other...
President, may I just address that? I agree with every single word you just said. I agree with every word you just said. We had about a month leading up to that moment where Councilman Steadley did not mention one time any concerns he had with the budget. Did not tell anybody that he was not going to vote for the budget. Not just one potential idea.
Sir, 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 I believe you. I understand what your point is.
Unfortunately, these discussions have to happen in open, in open forums. They can't happen...
Not when you're asking a person to identify how much they want to cut the budget. But please, let me continue, okay? I also noticed...
I don't like to say cut the budget. I believe I just reminded him that the police officer had changed his name.
No, we, we're not going to cut the, this budget. I'm just using that as illustration. I just mentioned it. Just a point of discussion. Also, I noticed when we started the meeting this evening that the Arnold Mayor also referred to the fact that people could speak to the issues that they have in mind. However, do not repeat the same thing. You're talking to the average citizen. I've come to many of the council meetings and you have no one to come to the mic. Time after time, people will not come to the mic. They find it intimidating. They're not comfortable doing that. But if there is a person that does desire to come to the mic and speak out, I think it would be most helpful if you allow the average citizen to state their case, express what they feel, even if it's repeated four, five, six, seven, eight times. It might be a long meeting. It's a very important issue to the people. And so you should hear them out. As far as most of the people are concerned, you're suppressing their voice. You're not giving them opportunity to speak out the way they'd like to speak out. All right, now, let me move on. The article did say that the mayor was going to solicit a draft, an ordinance that would be passed by council, would be put on the referendum, on the ballot. And I understand that. But at some of the other meetings, I understood that we were going to get an estimate of how much it was going to cost before you were going to do that.
We're still in a search pattern right now, right?
Yes. And, and I, I'm just saying that my idea of how things might be done would be to have that information so that when you do have the discussion with public, then they would have an idea where that number is.
I agree with you.
Here's another point. My wife doesn't usually come to these affairs, but she was very instrumental in helping to identify something. It says here that the township's listener, George Morse, did some investigation. And in his investigation, found out that yes, they could change it to May and things like that. And for people that have read this article, there is also the subtle effort that could be made to change it back to November again, nonpartisan. And so things like that disturb the average person. We're looking for integrity. We're looking for truthfulness. We have to be able to trust our townspeople. We have to understand that there is no reason to doubt what they have in mind and what they have in mind is good for the township, good for the people in the township. Now, there's a discussion that was made, to me, that this person that brought forth that idea was a plant. That person was instigated to do that, just to get things rolling, to give you a format, to move forward with your ideas like you're doing right now. The other thing that I was concerned with is the fact that there's the trash ordinance passed not long ago. And then I understand that was rescinded because it wasn't well thought out. There were considerations and things in there that should have been discussed and presented before it was established as a law or a...
You got it.
Yeah. But I'm also linking that to the thought...
Sir, President, if I can interrupt, the ordinance was on the books. It wasn't rescinded.
You know, I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that I have this article that says that things have changed from what was initialized in the council meetings. I was here for the council meeting. I heard that. But going ahead, there's another point. There's another argument that I hear from, from council, from Republicans. And I think they want to separate the local issues and events from the national. As I said, I've been here in the township for forty-one years. If you remember correctly, there was a thing called under the Bush administration with Cheney pushing an issue about invading Iraq. You remember that? By chance, the price that was paid for that political maneuver, because it was not justified. You just invaded a country because you wanted to. But we don't invade China. We don't just go off and invade a country like Russia. But what they did was to cause thousands of lives, which is much more important than a couple pennies here and there. How many of those men have been maimed and injured for the rest of their lives? Let's take another instance, Republican administration. But I didn't hear anything about changing the voting date. When there was this bankruptcy, when the banks were too big to fail, and what we did was to take money from the general treasury to pay for their inconsistency. And the Republicans knew what was going on. George, I mean, Greenspan was in office at the time, Federal Reserve. He knew about what was going on. So I'm just saying that, look, there are some things that people are concerned about. Let them voice their opinion, even if they say the same thing two or three times. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is, my name is Dr. Peter Villaserian. I live at fifty-one Washington Drive, Mount Laurel. I'm here to speak on this issue of voter suppression as well. I spoke about a month ago on this topic. I've been given more information as time has gone on. There were a lot of good articles in the Mount Laurel Sun, I thought, opposing this, this effort. So I want to, for the record, state some things, regardless of what, you know, what positions might have been stated today. Council members can always change their mind after the ordinance is passed. In the past decade, there have been three of them, Bass River, Woodtown, and Miffler Lakes are the only municipalities out of forty in Burlington County that conduct nonpartisan May elections. But the voter turnout is only twenty-four percent, okay? In contrast, in Mount Laurel, in the last presidential general election, had a turnout of seventy-five percent. So seventy-five percent of the people in Mount Laurel could choose who their, along with the president and senators and representatives, they could, they had the right to choose who their city council members were, knowing what party they're from. That's fantastic. That's what we want. We want seventy-five percent of eligible voters to turn out. I also understand it. This is an editorial by Mr. Malak that appeared in the Mount Laurel Sun, so that, you know, that's last week's issue as an editorial. People can go online and look at it. The other thing is, I think from those articles, because there's a lot of density to this topic, if this ordinance passes next proposed, possible ordinance, passes in November with, you know, referendum, that means that, and, and, that, that means that the next possible election is May of two thousand twenty. So, May, May of two thousand twenty-one, sorry. The next possible, is that correct? Yeah, in May of two thousand twenty-one. And even if they decide to change the elections to November, when would the next election be?
I don't even know when they change it. It could be November twenty-two.
It could be November twenty... Okay. Okay. Well, they could want it either way, right? If it's, if they leave it in May, then they don't have to worry about a general election turnout next, next year. Or they could suppress, suppress who they are by saying that it's a nonpartisan election. I mean, look, I'm going to ask that this council right now, you know, we've talked about a lot of ordinances, first reading, second reading. I want there to be no reading, no reading of the sergeants. I want every member of this council to say, let's, let's get on, let's get, let's put this aside. Let's go on and do something for our town. And now I'll say something that is a new topic. Mr. Edelson, the Councilman Edelson, a month ago, we talked about the budget and how the county council is raising the budget. You had an idea. You, you, we, somebody got up and talked about shared services, correct? And you made a comment about the Lenape Regional High School District, didn't you? And how they, wait, you talked about healthcare, you talked about, you talked about benefits that could possibly be shared.
That was directed to Mount Laurel.
What's that? No, but, but I thought you indicated that there were possible shared services that we might pursue with Lenape or Southwestern. What's that?
Mount Laurel first. We talked about Lenape, our tax going down, but that's a regional, that's a state.
I understand. But here's my idea, okay? There are, okay, Lenape, this, this, the taxes that we pay, about what, thirty-five percent are from the Lenape Regional High School District, correct? Twelve percent or whatever the number is for Mount Laurel. Why don't, why don't you in a bipartisan way, get together with other towns and find, pressure, and find out from those other towns, investigate what, what benefits could be, win with both the Lenape High School District and each of the towns. That would increase more of a market for benefits, okay? And therefore, the demand would increase, and therefore, both Lenape and our taxes could go down. Why don't you investigate that in a bipartisan way?
I can address that.
I can address that. I have reached out to the Mount Laurel School District and Lenape. They're what's called part of a hip, which is a, it's a insurance bond in which only... in which only schools are eligible to join. They only want to lump up with other schools. They don't want to lump up with the actual township. So, we had a meeting with the school districts. We had a meeting with the NUA. We had a meeting with the fire district. And we had a meeting with the library. The township currently does shared services with the library. They currently do shared services with the NUA, the fire district, and the school district. They weren't interested. We've asked, we've explored, we've brought things to the table, and we've been turned down. But we will continue to ask because we'll do any type of shared service that we can. I would continue to ask. But we did have a meeting last year, and they did not want to participate.
What I'm saying is, the meeting not just be with you and Lenape. You get together with other towns.
We have a shared service with Willingboro Township. We also had, um... We also give... We supply the gas from Moorestown. They pay us a higher rate. That's revenue that comes into the township. So we do have a shared service with other towns, too. We do get together and we do talk. I think that's right there. And also, we talk to the other towns as well. So when we reach out to them, I'm referring to Lenape, they're not interested, and I'm gonna tell you why. So we... We spend, Mount Laurel residents, out of the whole Lenape regional budget... Now, my numbers might be a little off. I haven't looked at it recently. But we spend about 35%... We're about 35% of Lenape regional budget. We send 27% of the kids, right? So we're overpaying, right? So in order for... So they don't want to sit down and talk to us. We try because they would have to pick up the difference. So we went... So when we said to them, "Pay your fair share," they don't want to talk to us.
But I'm not talking about the share.
I understand.
I'm talking about benefits and things like that.
Right. Well, she just addressed benefits, but they don't talk to us.
Doesn't Lenape have benefits? Where is it located?
They do. And that's what I'm saying. They're part of what's called a hip. The township is part of what's called state health benefits. We're in with the state, with numerous municipalities within the township to try and get the best rate. About two years ago, the township did shock rates to go in with other different municipalities. We looked to go in with Willingboro and with Moorestown. And it was cheaper for the township to stay with the state health benefits. The township has also passed on some of that cost to the employees. We're one of the few municipalities in the state in which our employees pay 50% of prescription, 50% of dental. Our employees have made that contribution, and they continue to make that. So we explore... And that makes it difficult, too, for us to lump in with somebody else because our employees actually pay more than any other municipalities.
All I'm saying is, let's do what it do. We're sort of do. There may be some Democrats that are elected to those other municipalities as well. They may... Things... Power might have changed in some of those communities, all right? I'm not sure who all is in Lenape different. But Councilman Steigl and Councilman Fisher, I'd like you to take this up and see if you can get some bipartisan support.
If they can run all for that, I will stand behind these two gentlemen. 115% if they have made it.
It's not reelection to the voters.
Well, it's not there. It's not there. It's some bipartisan effort we're up. Okay. All right. Anyway, the main topic is the voter suppression. I would like you... I'm sorry. When you make it nonpartisan in November, there's absolutely no reason for it. None. You know, as a voter, I want to know. Part of this party, I want to know. Who's... What party is... There's principles that each party represents. There's the way they campaign, okay? There's a whole bunch of issues. So I think that is important for voters to understand what party people are from when they're being elected. And most towns in the state do it. So let's get with the supermajority.
Patty, I'm the 2101 Denim Court. I come up here tonight reluctantly and sadly. For those who don't know me, I was a municipal clerk for 24 years in Mount Laurel. And 12 of those years, I was also the township manager. I handled the elections for those 24 years. When I moved here, it was a Democratic township. Shortly thereafter, it became controlled by the Republicans. And the whole time I worked, there was only four years when there was a Democratic person on council. But for 24 years, I had to work with both parties. I registered as an independent, and I tried to be fair and equal and honest with the parties. I always tried to be a person of integrity and honesty. And I'm disturbed by what I'm seeing because I feel nonpartisan elections are really hiding that the Republicans are Republicans. If you're not going to run under a Republican banner, who's going to pay for your funding for an election? Are the Republican governor in favor? Or are they somewhere else? There was talk about independents, but just like now, independents would have to raise their own money. They don't have a campaign behind them. So it really would be no different for the independent person. In Mount Laurel, Mount Laurel always did what was good for Mount Laurel. We didn't listen to the county Republicans. We didn't listen to the state Republicans. We told them to go to hell sometimes, and they weren't happy with us. But we did what was best for Mount Laurel residents. And everybody knew who they were, and they voted for them time and time again. The pendulum is swinging the other way. I won't talk about the national level because I just got done reading every word of the Mueller report. And I wouldn't want my name under anything near that man. And that's all I'll say regarding that. But I will say that I really think if you continue to do what you did in the past, to attend events, to get your name out there, to tell people what you're really about, people will continue to vote for you no matter what column you're under. People in Mount Laurel have always voted... A lot of them have voted and broke party lines to vote for people they thought were of integrity. So I ask you to please not change to a partisan town. A nonpartisan... I mean, a nonpartisan town. I feel this beneath you. Thank you.
My name is George Brill. I live at 127A, Chaucer Road. I want to thank the council, and particularly, I want to thank the zoning officer, Mr. Koff. Since my friend and neighbor and I came in here about the trash issue, the difference in the neighborhood has been dramatic. I can't thank you enough. There's still a few spots that need to be polished, but it's amazing the difference in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Coco Capri from 45 Warner Avenue in Mount Laurel. I, too, have been attending the council meetings since that first gentleman stood up and asked the council to consider separating the municipal election from the national partisan election. At first, I thought it was an interesting concept. I agree that many local issues don't align with national issues. And I know that there are some who immediately stood up and denounced it, citing the cause of voter suppression. And there are certainly concerns of mine. I've taken the time over the past month to learn as much as I could about nonpartisan elections, the pros, the cons, and how this may affect the voters of Mount Laurel. I've read the statutes, the laws, all of this governing these elections. And it is clear to me that if nonpartisan elections were to come to Mount Laurel, they could be held as part of the general election as opposed to May. There are more than 80 municipalities in New Jersey, I think 86 to be exact, that currently hold nonpartisan elections for their local form of government. So this is not a new concept. And based on the 2010 law that allowed for nonpartisan towns to switch from May to November, now, less than 20 of these towns still hold their elections in May. Clearly, moving the election to November eliminates the cost factor to taxpayers and deals with the issue relating to voter turnout. And it was interesting to note, because I've done a ton of research, that the law that allowed that switch from May to November was sponsored by members of the Democratic Party. So I'm questioning why there is such an uproar over the decision of Mount Laurel. Specifically during my research, and I've heard these comments from several others this evening, I couldn't help but notice those letters to the editor, the editorials, the Facebook posts, and articles in various newspapers. I saw the words "stranglehold," "sleazy," "MAGA," and more derogatory comments. It is this partisan display of comments that makes me see why going nonpartisan may make sense. The majority of voters in this town are independent voters. Let's find out how they feel about this. I am sure that extremists on both sides of the political aisle are not going to like this referendum, and they would vote against it. But what about everybody else? There are tens of thousands of Mount Laurel voters out there that don't have the opportunity nor the time to stay fully informed to come to these council meetings. I encourage council to place the referendum on the ballot. Be clear about what this referendum means. And the referendum itself has to be clear. If these terms can be met, let the people decide. Thank you.
And I'll take a bank comment briefly from Michael Muller from 43 Overlook Drive here in Mount Laurel. And I don't want to cover the same ground, but I want to address a couple things very specifically. I want to address something Deputy Mayor Bobo brought up tonight. The idea of moving the election to November... Let's take that scenario. We talked a lot about that. Let's walk through it. It's math equation. When it comes down to it, the voter turnout in the November election, and this isn't just true here in Mount Laurel. We see it at elections. We see it all over the state. About half the people who participate in the elections that year that are on the ballot do not vote on nonpartisan races. And I wrote this in op-ed over the weekend. They live in ballot Siberia. It's just nature. We have a lot of elections in New Jersey. Get buried. So just think about it for a second. 75% turnout? Let's round up. 40% of the people, let's say, vote in that election? It's disenfranchisement in an indirect way. It's just... It's pure and simple facts. It's math equation. Everyone can look at the numbers. Any clerk around the state. And secondly, I want to direct something to the mayor. I was very, very disturbed, like a lot of people were, with the comments in the paper. And I'm gonna hit something that wasn't talked about tonight. What are we afraid of? Now, obviously, there's very polarizing political comments directly, you know, the democratic way, you know, it's...
He had a few come at me, too.
Fair and deserved. But I'm gonna say this, to be completely honest. You know, it felt like a 1980s movie. It felt like I'm listening to Marty McFly saying, like, "No one called me chicken." What are we afraid of? You know, the bottom line here is that we would like to see the ball work together in a productive way. You know, this was not a severe campaign or anything last time. We heard about it earlier tonight about what Kareem Pritchett suffered last time in that election. And you know what? I look back at it, like, actually, he accused me of, I, about being aligned with Donald Trump in that election. It was pretty laughable. So, you know, if the referendum goes up, there's three of you, you can vote for it. You know, if people like a drum in November, you know what? We'll have our say. But the true matter is here, this is bad for this township. You should get back to the people's business.
Hey, everyone. I'm Brian Sharp, 18 Bitter Way, Mount Laurel. I've actually been here for the five meetings. I did not come up and speak because I felt that I thought the council was actually hearing the people, but clearly, it still was moving forward. I just want to talk about that I don't think that there's a political divide in our town. We've elected Republicans locally, Democrats nationally, for years. This proposed election change will only work at hiding the party affiliation of the people who actually do have a party affiliation. In our country, there is a huge political divide right now with people generalizing about other people and their motives without getting to know them. This is happening between people of different heritage, religion, wealth, as well as political affiliation. And instead of having a referendum that will divide our town, I think we should look at fixing the real problems dividing us from each other. I'd like to see the two major parties and any independents or third parties in our town have open dialogue. One opportunity would be to... Would be for people with various political views to come together on Mount Laurel Peanut Day, April 27, and make a point to interact with people they did not already know. I would also like to see the Democrat and Republican committees and clubs in our town participate in softball games and a joint barbecue at Laurel Lakers Park. I don't think a couple Saturdays of Union Day will fix everything, but it's a start for all of us to start seeing each other as individuals. And if you also take care to choose our words carefully and judge people on their abilities and character, we might actually learn to respect each other, and even with our political differences. Believe it or not, Mount Laurel has always been... Always had a large number of Democrats and unaffiliated citizens, despite years of Republican leadership on township council. It will continue to function whether Democrats, Republicans, or independents serve on or lead township council. There is nothing about our current form of government that prevents independents from running for township council. If this proposed referendum is truly motivated by desire to include them, I would suggest the council publicize this fact prior to the deadline to get independent independents involved. Also, in the four months of having two Democrats on this council, we have seen most of the proposed ordinances and resolutions have been passed unanimously by council. So we do have a council today that is acting in a nonpartisan way over most issues. This divisive rest referendum idea should be put to rest. If there is truly community support for the proposed change, it should be done via petition, signed by 20% of the voters, or about 4,000 people. Pushing through a referendum without community support along party lines can only continue to divide our town. I ask you to think of all of us citizens of Mount Laurel and end this dispute now. Thank you.
How's everybody doing tonight? My name is Corrine Pritchett, Jr. I live at 106 Wood Road. And I'm not really into politics. I really don't understand what's going on, to be honest. But I will try to defend my family. And I do want to say that there was a little sleazy campaign going on the first time my dad did go and run. My family was disrespectful. As you look at me, I have dreads. You may think that I probably smoked weed or something like that. To be honest, I'm not smoking weed. I just got out of school. I went to a school for underwater welding and everything. I'm about to get into an industry where I can't smoke. So, I want to let you guys know that picture that went out trying to make an image of my dad was kind of disrespectful to where I come from and to my family. That they made him look like a thug. Now, me, you'll probably see me, probably, if I wore sweatpants and a hoodie, I would look like a thug. All right? But all I'm saying is, yeah, it was very disrespectful. I mean, if you guys can't see that, I'm sorry. But being a black person in a diverse town, I even witnessed racist comments. And people don't even know that they're being racist. That's what I have realized. So, and some people don't even know what racist is. That's another thing that we've got to understand. And I'm not trying to make this a whole racial thing. There's a lot more stuff that's going on in the political thing. I'm not really all into that, but I'm just letting you guys know whoever has something to do with that, I hope some type of way. All right, I'm letting you go then. Thank you.
My name is George Brill. I live at 127 Joseph Road. In my comments before, I failed to acknowledge the great debt that we owe Councilman Pritchett and Councilman Staley for getting this trash cleanup started.
You guys should be happy to see me close it, okay?
Well, that's what you say.
And we are happy to see you guys down the line.
Well, hold the bed the way I have to say.
No, we're honored to have you join us this evening.
Thank you.
Take it out.
I would love to take it out, but I talk with my hands and it could go flying. Not enough, we'll try it, but if it does stop. My Carol Murphy Assemblywoman from the state of New Jersey, represent the seventh legislative district. My address is straight up the overlooked drive. I have to be honest with you, I wasn't going to speak tonight. I sent the council, the mayor, Meredith, and Mr. Worth. Sorry, I neglected to send it to you. I have copies of your letter. I sent you a letter of my feelings about this issue as it relates to the ordinance and nonpartisan elections. I'm not going to stand here and regurgitate everything everybody said. You've heard from a diverse number of people. Mayor, we've been working together on many issues, including traffic issues. As an Assemblywoman, one thing that, when I got elected, I got elected to serve the people. I got elected to assure that we did not live in the past, but we moved our state forward. And that's including Mount Laurel. Mount Laurel has forty-one thousand residents, all of which I wish would vote, but do not. But we have a good majority. We are the second largest town in Hollywood County, and we are the first largest town in the seventh legislative district which I represent. Moving here very long time ago, one of the things on my agenda was to assure that Mount Laurel was placed on the map. And by doing that, I feel that we need to do it the right way. This is not the right way. In Trenton, in Trenton, we work for equality. In Trenton, we're working for minimum wage for all working class families. We are working to assure that everyone is treated equal. Everyone has the right to vote. Everyone has the right to make a fair wage. Everyone has a right to access to health care. And the reason why I am bringing this up, despite the partisan, nonpartisan, Democrat, Republican, independent, because I can guarantee you, no one's going to stand up here from the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, or the Independent Party is going to say, "Hey, I'm perfect, that means nothing." There's not one single person. So with that being said, council, mayor, deputy mayor, it is incumbent upon us as elected officials, not only from the state, but as from the council, to check the politics at the door. When we're in this building, when we're in Trenton, when we're in the county freehold building, politics stays out. And to move an election, for whatever reason, should not be based upon politics, but based upon the need of the town. What I see and what I've been navigating for, and I said this clearly in my letter, that I have been advocating to make sure that more and more people have access to vote. There is no ID, state ID that you have to present to be able to vote. Your address is the place you live, you should be able to vote. Doesn't matter what party you are, access to vote, whether it's through book by mail, whether it's through provisional ballot, whether it's through taking the privilege to go into a polling place and pull that lever, because that's what we have a right to do. Putting a partisan election in a town that has been so successful, nonpartisan, I keep saying it wrong. Pretty soon, you're going to disagree with your party. We're going to keep it partisan.
That's the plan.
But to keep it a nonpartisan town, in a town that has worked so far, it only creates chaos. And I implore you, as another way as a resident, and as a state legislator, standing here knowing that in Trenton, we are fighting the battles, not just the state, but yes, of our federal laws and of our federal environment. It impacts all of us. And we can't run from it. And if we continue starting to run from it, all we're going to do is get ourselves caught up in the mess that ten years from now might not be us, but our future leaders are going to stand here trying to make sense of the mess that we put because of politics. Let's stop. Let's all start working together. And I'm going to end it with this, because I want to be made to know this. In 2018, when I took office, there was approximately twenty, not twenty, but maybe fifteen elected officials on both sides of the party, Democrat and Republican. And one of our legislators formed a group called the Two Eighteen Club. And the reason why it's called the Two Eighteen Club is because it represents the freshman legislators on both sides of the aisle who get together before every single session to talk about how we can work together, how we as legislators can make a difference, how we want to stand here before our constituents doing the job that they elected us to do. And if our names are hidden somewhere down below, we're never going to get that that chance to be able to show the people what we can do. And we just put in a resolution that would urge Congress to take a look at what we're doing here in New Jersey. Let's not let Mount Laurel, with the nonpartisan, destroy what we're trying to do here in New Jersey. Not destroy what it is that we're trying to set an example for, that we work together. And with all due respect there, we work together, and I'm going to stress that. I have every intention of continuing working with you. I have every intention of working with the council. Meredith, she answers all my calls. You've got to talk to me. But when I stand up here and listen to people start talking about things that they said they don't do when all heard correctly, let's not do that. And if we're wrong, we're wrong. If we're right, we're right. And I'll leave it with this, that my grandmother always says, "A hundred Frenchmen cannot be wrong." So with that, I want to thank you. And I bet you can just say something, I'm sorry.
You know what? This is the fork, so I have to do it. So it's Mr. Holt, right? I've been coming for, we've had council meetings for two years. Mr. Holt lives on the corner of Masonville and Creek Road. He gets murdered with traffic. To your point, doing the job that they elected us to do. If I didn't take advantage of this situation and ask you, we haven't had any, the DOT hasn't provided a date for a meeting. The third is thirty-eight, two ninety-five, ever pass. Do you think you can give us a date when we can meet with the DOT?
And that is what we're looking at. The DOT Commissioner is appearing before us in the Budget Committee within the next two weeks, and he has told us that, once he's done prepping for that. And this will be on my agenda to talk to him. So it's not just like one shot kill here. We will get a date. And my staff is calling them every day, I guarantee you. So, and I promise you, as sure as I'm standing here, we're doing everything we can to get a date. If they do not, I will be calling the Commissioner directly myself. My staff cannot get a date. So, and it's always the short way.
Mr. Holt's going to be here next week. I can answer that question through the log.
Well, tell Mr. Holt that he's more than welcome to call my office and talk to me directly. We've been involved together with your office, with the Rand Coakus Creek Building Association, our business association, making sure that Rand Coakus is built up, making sure that we have alternative routes for those traffics. Because if we're going to make Rand Coakus Creek built up with our businesses, and we want Mount Laurel businesses to succeed, and we want to bring more businesses to Mount Laurel.
We did the redevelopment, yeah?
I saw that, I saw that. And the Department of Transportation just came out with a tentative report, which I saw. There are a few projects listed that you've already talked about on here.
Is it on it?
There is a couple of those on there, and Rand Coakus Creek on the road.
But is the interchange on there?
The interchange is not on there. So, my, that's why I just got it. So I just briefly went through it. And I have to tell you, there is some on there, but it's only tentative. I'm hoping that once the Department of Transportation meets with the Budget Committee and we fully understand where they're coming from, especially when it comes to the transportation fund, we need to find out what the status of matters as well. But there are a lot of projects that...
That's a twenty-six gallon tax?
Pardon me?
Twenty-six gallon tax. That's funded by the twenty-six gallons, twenty-six cents a gallon.
Yes, yes, yes. And that's the dedicated portion, yes.
I don't know the answer to this question. Did the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation change in the administration? Or is it the same one?
No, it's changed.
Oh, it has changed?
Yeah. It has to keep on last year.
Because Meredith and myself and our economic development regional planning representative for the county met with the previous Department of Transportation Commissioner and Senator Singleton about two years ago. And we thought we were headed down the right path. They signed us a project manager. They, you know, made all kinds of promises and nothing, nothing came to... And I said about these two, if they can get the Lenape issue resolved, if you can get this resolved, I would endorse you. Honest to God. And you would be a hero to the residents of Mount Laurel.
Because we're staring down the barrel of a tremendous amount of traffic right now. And that interchange could change lives.
You've got two new developments being built on Singleton Road.
Absolutely, and I see that.
And it's going to contribute to both thirty-eight, two ninety-five, and Creek in two ninety-nine.
And I live right there. I live right there, Rand Coakus and the two ninety-five area. You know, we're looking at major traffic problem. Our transportation infrastructure as a whole is horrible in New Jersey. It is horrible. Public transportation in South Jersey is horrible. When we are sitting here talking about budget, trust me, I'm going to tell you this. It does not go unnoticed by the Budget Committee about what we need to get done. And I can only tell you that I give you my promise, I am constantly working on making sure that Mount Laurel gets our fair share.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
So, let me close my comments. And we're going to go to comments by council. Meredith?
Just wanted to remind everybody tomorrow, please come to Mount Laurel from six-thirty to eight-thirty at Nerington. And also on Saturday is our cleanup day. And our short event cleanup day will be at Laurel Lakers. We'll start off at Laurel Lakers Park, and the short event will have a Gary Foose Garage from nine to one.
Councilor?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to say, I am touched and pleased that everybody came out. Voice your opinions on both sides. But understand something. We all hear a lot of sayings. If it's not broken, don't fix it. History peters us. A picture speaks a thousand words. Actions speak louder than words. These are things that we hear over and over again. And everybody heard, yes, when I went through in 2016. I don't even think that question was answered, why that picture? Why was that picture sent to you? But I'm not going to ask that question. Because I can make my own opinion of why. I hear that, why? Why is it a problem changing the election to a nonpartisan? My question is, why now? We've been doing, there's been a partisan township for so many years, so many years, for a number of national issues. Why now? Why now when you have two Democrats on the council board? Why now when you have an African-American on the council board? So if there's no problem... If there's no problem with it being nonpartisan or being partisan, the question is, why now? And if you can't answer that question, then I say, ladies and gentlemen, let's gear up. Because come November, we're going to have a decision to make. Okay? And if you're not, if you're not for people who think that sending a picture to voters in a hoodie is not what you want running this township, then talk to your neighbors, talk to friends and family. Because come November, we will make another change. Thank you.
Councilor Saban?
First of all, thank you for everybody for attending. Thank you to the Moms Man Action. Your work, your advocacy is literally changing lives. It's literally saving lives. And in a time that we need to be talking about these controversial hotbed issues that are affecting our schools, our churches, our malls, our communities, I really do appreciate advocacy and thanks for being here. Shout out to Shannon. Okay, the basketball club. It's like something straight out of Boogers. I'm going to give my full luck up on the fuck now. Cornup. You know, as I stated before, and just to echo my friend Corrine Pritchett, there's no reason to change this election. Overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly, people have said they're not in favor of this. We've heard some people say that they are in favor, and I do appreciate that most. I really do. Overwhelmingly, when people start coming to your meetings and start demanding you to just leave things the way they are, that's not a hard, that's not a hard request. And, you know, I think it's important to keep things the way they are for our elections. I want to give a shout out to, and I've said it to friends privately, but one of the gentlemen that we ran against in 2018, for Dennis Riley, who was a real class act the night we had one. Okay? Him and his running mate called us personally and said, "Congratulations, did the best job you can." You know, if you need any advice, anything. I mean, they were real class acts. Not once did they bring up vote totals, they didn't bring up party. They faced a tough election, and there were real class acts coming out of that. So publicly, I'm going to say thank you to them. I really do, I'm praying that this conversation ends tonight, that we move forward, and we do what we need to do together. And, you know, to address, when the Reverend had brought up, you know, when I had dissented, I've already made it clear, and it's a promise to my three council members in the opposite end of the aisle. When I come into dissent on a decision, I'll come with, I'll first speak to the mayor about it, and I'll come with recommendations and speak to him about it. I did do that in the beginning. I'll be the first to say, you know, this is a learning experience for me. I'll be the first to say, you know, this is a learning experience for me, and I'll, I'll keep that. So, other than that, we've never voted no against each other on anything else. And I'm, I'm hoping to continue. Thank you.
So, who's here, Vovo?
I have nothing this evening, other than I'll just piggyback on Councilman Staley. Those conversations have to happen here. So, this is where the conversations happen. Whether we're talking about a nonpartisan election or a budget, this is where those conversations happen. I wanted to thank Assemblywoman Murphy for coming this evening. We are happy to have her, always love them. We appreciate everybody's thoughts and concerns and opinions, and keep coming. This is where these opinions need to be heard. Okay? And I hate to steal your thunder. This is your living room, right? This is where you come to talk. This is where you come to express your opinions, provide your thoughts. This is where we want to hear what you have to say. So keep coming.
Councilor Madison?
I'll say it again, welcome to America. This is what we do. We fill it out, turn it around, talk about it, think about it. This is not over. There's still some thought process. We had 15 people, 16 people come up. There's 42,000 of us here. I'm still on the fence of people that don't come to meetings like this, that don't participate. I don't know how to reach out to them, other than Facebook or something like that. The voices were heard tonight, sincere, concerned. I heard it, I hear it, I believe it. I don't think this is over. It may be, I don't know. But we deserve the other 30,000 voters, 42, so maybe 30,000 voters, to have a voice here. How that's going to happen, I don't know. I don't know. But I don't think this is over. There's going to be some more discussion. And please, come out and say it again. If you're for it or against it, that's what we need to hear. Karine, I'm sorry for what you went through. I have to say this, I kept this. I'm on council now seven years. My second year, and I'll say this. First Jewish man, first Jewish ma'am, first Jewish stepmother. My second year on council, my house improperly was defaced. And we came back and said, I'm done, put in the paper, on the records, in the police department. Yes, they did anti-Semitic, looking and everything else, nothing popped up. But twice later, my house was attacked improperly. Let it lie there, doesn't just happen to certain callers or certain athletes. Happened to me, and sorry it happened to Karine. I had to say it tonight because it was brought up. And I feel a lot better now. But it's out, I'm going to keep it and hear it. Thank you all for coming, and that'll be here next meeting.
Thank you for coming out. Sincerely, thank you for coming out, expressing your opinion. This is, this is why our country is great, and one of the greatest countries in the world. I want to echo what Irwin said. It's not over. We are investigating, we'll see what happens. What I do want to say though is, tonight, we also had a front row seat to see some pretty important business get done for the town today. There's a no soliciting ordinance that we're starting to work its way through. We have the no smoking in the park ordinance that's working its way through. It's a significant thing. You don't know what's going to happen with marijuana in the state of New Jersey, but I don't think anybody wants, well, I don't think anybody wants people smoking pot while they're pushing their kids on swing. We're going to be sure that doesn't happen.
And the marijuana ordinance that we also put up tonight, you can't go and buy it and get a sample. It's part of it. You can't sample it in that shop. That's part of what we proposed today. So thank Jerry and Chief Stringello for bringing out the capital budget, as well as for, for, for Saturday. The capital budget, though. You and your mills getting paid, folks, for working on it, right? You know, that's a big deal. So, not only do we get to express our opinion here and, and have it listened to, but also things get done here to try to make our constituents, our citizens, our neighbors' lives better. And that's really, at the end of the day, what all of us up here are trying to do, is to make our lives better. So thank you for coming out tonight. The air conditioner hopefully will be working next time. Drive safely. And it's in the, one more thing. Councilwoman, or Assemblywoman Murphy, thank you so much for coming out. Thank you for always listening. Thank you for being a part of this community. Be safe driving.